I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay Gloria, I didn't notice. I don't think anybody else did either.
I don't either.
The lower hall, Alderman Flaggastue, Alderman Dennis Bovay, Alderman Gloria Baker, Alderman Paul Franklin.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I second it.
All in favor? I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I second it.
All in favor? Okay. Public forum. Mr. Welker, you want to get up and tell us what your...
I'm Ed Welker, my wife Margie and Jeff. We are kind of in the process of taking over the bank building, the lower hall. And it's not final yet, but we're working on it. Just a couple of things we need to talk about, and of course, one of them is the post office. That's one of the issues. One of the other issues was, is that we checked on what they paid taxes last year. It was thirty-six hundred dollars the bank paid last year. So we probably need some help, somebody working on that.
Getting that reassessed? Or getting it reassessed?
Reassessed. Yeah, because it's just, they could build it.
Flood out building.
So if somebody could work on that in the meantime, that would, that would help. And also, we just like some input from you guys. What would you guys like to see there? We don't, we, we haven't done this before, we're new at it. So just whatever, we need some input.
I don't want to really interrupt you, Ed, but for that assessment, you'll have to see the county assessor because they're the ones that make the assessment for the city of St. Mary. City of St. Mary is not, cannot make an assessment.
Well, we already saw her. But we really didn't get much help there. She said, well, I know what you can do with something, you know.
Right.
So I don't know if anybody else has some influence, if somebody has some influence with the assessor, but you know, thirty-six hundred bucks is quite a bit.
It's a flooded out banking building for now.
At that time, it was figured out as a two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollar building.
Right. When was it assessed last, do you know?
I don't know, I don't know if she said that, I don't know.
Now, when, when you put a business in there, won't they come down and reassess it?
Yeah, that's fine, but for our guys who's debating bill.
That maybe...
And they won't assess it as an empty building?
That's not the impression we got.
They didn't really want to.
They really didn't want to.
They don't like the way it is.
Sure you...
Yeah, yeah, right.
Oh yeah.
Right.
Well, she did say something about maybe twenty percent.
Something about a twenty percent, something, which still, three thousand dollars or something. So if anybody can have some influence, I think you have a local guy, Clem Donzie, I don't know if he's, he used to be the assessor. And I don't know if he can influence somebody. It was just something to think about.
And does anybody have any ideas of something else they'd like to see in there?
Is the post office going to stay?
Well, no.
We don't know.
We'd like to keep them, but we don't know what, we don't know, I think they have to have some things out of the bank yet.
You guys want to talk about the post office thing first?
Alright, what's the story on the post office? Let's, let's hear it.
Are you here representing the post office?
Yeah, I'm Tom Parks, I'm the postmaster of St. Genvee.
Okay.
This is a R and P O out of St. Genvee. I had talked to people in Kansas City, Denver, wherever to handle this. We per se, we leased the building from the First State Bank. So we don't, we have certain amount of control, and we mean St. Genvee, we don't do anything with it. We have a lease department that handles all that stuff. I talked to them, and the last information I got, they have terminated the lease with the bank because the bank is either, now I'm not positive, but they're going to sell it or was going to demolish it. They had taken prices on both and were making the decision. And apparently, they've talked to maybe you guys, seen about putting in a new bank somewhere.
They haven't talked to them?
They haven't talked to them.
I have, I've been a lady.
Oh yeah, okay.
The only thing I heard is that they was thinking about putting in a bank, building a bank.
Building a new bank.
Right. I don't know, because that's the bank. It only concerned us, because it would be, we've got some partnerships with First State Bank all over, but there's no guarantee, that doesn't guarantee that we would do it again. You know?
Right.
And I wouldn't make that decision. That comes out of the postal headquarters. And so I talked to the lady that is in control of it as of now, and she said they sent something to Washington DC to get it reassessed and everything. They'll make a determination of what they want to do, what they would do if it comes up now. If they would lease, they, they want to come back in here, they would get home, they send out letters to all the businesses, they give everybody the opportunity to give us a, a building, tell us what they have, and we will tell you what we would need. So, you know, there's no guarantee of where they would go back into. If, if the place I want to heal the gas station, if he said, I want to be part of it, or you guys said, we want to do something here, they look at that and they determine where they would go back into. So unfortunately, I can't, don't have the authority to say, yes, we will go back in that building. I won't say that. You know, I don't know where they will go. That's, somebody else will make that decision in, in buildings, in maintenance and everything with the postal.
Is that it? Is that even being considered, you know?
What's that?
To go back in that building?
They would consider going back in any place. They wouldn't not consider that building.
You're right, now I asked, they've got the box and everything already there.
Right.
They're set up.
Right. I mean, that is not a major thing. I mean, they, they would not say that, but that, they're going to look at it and send it out and give everybody the same opportunity when it comes up. I know, because we did a, what they call a cars unit. We got one, I, I put it in when I was in Bonterre. It was in Terrelac. They got it, if you haven't noticed, or the First State Bank, they go into Terrelac. They approached me about getting one. Well, we had to go through some steps, but before we could, we can't just say, okay, sure, you want one, we're going to do it, and then you may have wanted one. So what we did, we sent letters to all the businesses in a certain area out there, and went through all the process, and then we had to go and rebuild each place. You know, like, let's say the beauty shop put it in, and they had a place that big, that was too small, wasn't big enough. So we have to go, they have to meet certain criteria, and then we look at it, and then they make a decision of where they would go.
Well, let me ask you this, okay. Is there any indication as how soon that the decision will be made, and when we might hear something?
Yes, I did, I talked to my boss and some other people, and right now, we're, we're checking on getting some temporary boxes, if anybody has a P O box there. I talked to the bank, and they gave me the okay that we may set some temporary boxes that basically, they're called N D C B U's. They're like across the road from the bank there. We would set some of those up, the bank said we could set them up there. I think we need three or four units depending on what size we get. We would set three or four of those up there and put everybody's P O box. It would kind of be like an outside P O box, as a temporary setup. I did ask them how long this whole process to go through and get everything, and get it in another building, and they said it could take six months to eighteen months.
Wow. They ain't getting it hurry, are they?
Now, didn't we know for sure that they are bringing the post office back?
No.
I, I don't know either way. They haven't said they're not, and they haven't said they are. That's something somebody else would make a decision on.
But the lease is up.
The lease was, and we basically, because we can't offer, you know, go into the building now, so they, the lease is up. We, they, I don't know if they terminated it, or, it was about to expire, they would have normally probably renewed it, but with it being flooded, they didn't.
What about the contract for the box? The outside box, the pickup box outside?
Yeah.
Is that going to be moved with the, the other boxes, the post office boxes?
I don't know what they'll want to do with that, I have to check with them. We might, we can put up an outside box there, possibly, I have something I have to check on. They've taken that one out of service, you know, when they got flooded, they, everything there goes out of service.
I got a question. I don't, the post office, the post office is trying to get rid of some of the routes. I've seen that in the past. If they don't get us the post office, why don't we open our own boxes up? Why don't they make another route?
You mean...
You got, you got to admit, we have to be able to get our mail. Why don't we each one of us have a mail box up at our house?
No, you can't.
Yeah, and that's going to cost more.
I, I don't know.
Tom is honest.
I mean, but anybody that can, and we've had some people do that, put a box up at their house, and that's fine too. Close your box and put a box at your house, and we'll deliver, we'll sell your stamps, we'll pick up packages, and do everything like that also. Because I think there's fifty-three active boxes there now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The other handy thing is, if you want a mail package, you have to go to St. Genvee to do it.
Right. You know, and this is not something I wanted, this is something that just happened, and then unfortunately, it's a process to go through. Because they did have, once it flooded, they brought in an outside contractor, he went in the building, and he was there when it first was, once it dried out, not dried out, but once it went down, and he made some recommendations to the bank of what had to be done before the post office would go back in there. You know, they have to be concerned about the safety of employees and mold or anything like that, so they made a, they should have watched, they, the post office.
I called the main officer too, and they said at the time, if First State built out here, they talking to them about they'll have been with them, the post office there.
Yeah.
But they don't know yet, because First State don't know where they're going yet.
Yeah, I don't, I thought somebody said, but you know, you hear all the rumors.
Yeah.
I thought somebody said First State was talking to the chamber or something about what in building.
That's more like what's happening.
So, you know, if they, but if they have a spot, I know if they're interested in having a bank either, or I mean, a post office either in it or attached, you know, on the end of...
Yes.
Let's say they build a building, because like in Terrelac, you go straight into the bank, and there's a, like a, what they call a post office unit there, it's a cars unit.
It's like a post office, yeah.
But it's run by their employees. There's also, they've done them like that on a lot of places. Now, they can also, like, do a V P O, which is like at Mary's Market, and they sell the stamps. And then they also can put in another post office. If the bank build a building, I'm just using them for an example, and they have a building on the end, or if these people buy this building and, you know, fix it up, and then the post office could go back in there.
But as far as you know, the, the postal folks aren't planning to jerk in the post office from St. Mary's, or the mail, like, we want to ship a box, or we want to do this or do that. We still are going to have a post office.
As far as I know, nobody has told me that they're going to close that, and that's, I'll be honest with you, that's way above my pay grade to make that decision, you know. It's somebody else would make that decision. You know, now, I'm not going to say it's never happened. I know they had one that burned, and then they didn't rebuild. I think, I don't know, I wasn't here in Bloomsdale, but I think they didn't have a place, I don't know what all went on, but sometimes they do close them, but I haven't heard a word either way. So they, like you say, the lady I talked to yesterday was, said they put in different paperwork, as far as I know, I, they, nobody said close it yet.
So it's still an option for us to have the post office?
Right. Well, my, my concern is, is not only for the citizens of the town, but also for the city itself. All our business is conducted with, with the mail and stuff like that.
Sure.
I would appreciate any heads up that you could give us prior to any decisions being made.
Sure.
If you could do that for us, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Now, I'll be honest with you, I may not know before some, you know, they don't, they, they'll ask me different information, I email them or whatever, but they don't always, if they make a decision to do something, they, you know, somebody may contact me, but they may not also. I do know, I, there was an employee there, transferred to our office, and that was through something totally different, but now, we had hired a girl to work there. We hired her, well, we had her hired before she came, the place flooded, so she's been working in our office, now she's transferred to another office, but they did go ahead and were hiring another one. We're posting that, and we're hiring another position. So I would look at that as a good sign, you know, because they're going, they've hired a person to work there, so.
Right.
But nobody has told me one way or another, you know.
Well, Reese, you know, the story I got is, how long ago was that, when they, a couple of years ago, something like that, we started asking, you know, about the, the post office, and, and the story I got that they met, well, they did, they mailed letters out to people and business and everything, and had a meeting down there. And I heard that Bloomsdale, the reason why Bloomsdale lost their post office, is because nobody showed up and, you know, and, you know.
Yeah.
Talked about it. Well, people went down here and talked to the guy, whoever it was, so now, we still got a post office, but it's only four hours a day.
Right.
You know? And I'm thinking, four hours a day is better than nothing.
Right, and they've done that in a lot of areas, simply because there's not that much business there, you know. And it's, you know, it's like every business, they're trying to save where they can, you know.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I'm thinking not only the people here, but in the surrounding area or on the island, I mean, you know.
Right.
We, a lot of people here in Detroit have post offices, so I'm just wondering. Well, we appreciate your time and your...
No problem, glad to be here.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Welker, do you have anything else you want to...
Not really. Like I say, we, and you guys can talk about, we, we just like some input from you guys on what, you know, like I say, we're new on this. What would you like to see? And also, your support, very, very important.
Oh yeah.
The town's going to have to support whatever goes in.
Correct, yes. Would you like to see a restaurant, or, or what, Julian, you know?
We did talk to a property manager, a sort of property manager, I just talked to the secretary, I said, we have, we'll have a building, can you, can you use it? And so they're going to come and look at it, and maybe make some suggestions, but we don't know when, so. Anyway, we need some input from your group. If, you know, and I think everybody agrees, you need, you, you guys need something.
Oh yeah.
You need something, something to perk the town back up.
Oh yeah.
Because this, this building was, it was a deal of, if you don't buy it, we'll want to tear it down. So, oh, that's why we bought it. I mean, it was that close to being a pile of bricks. So it's the last...
Have you guys, have you guys thought about anything that you'd like to get at, you know, get interested in, or, you know?
Well, we've, you know, just kind of brainstorming, you know, maybe a diner.
A restaurant?
Restaurant. You know, just...
But we're not financial investors here, so, you know, we don't have a million dollars to drop into this building.
So whatever, whatever...
So if you have ideas, you know, let us know.
Yeah, we need, we need that.
Little input, yeah.
Yeah, input from you guys, and maybe, you know, more what you need than we can. We don't live here, we're, we're in Perry County, so.
And we're not opposed to having the post office back.
No.
We're not, we're not opposed to that.
And we're not opposed to coming there.
Right.
It's just, they have to, is, you know, they have to make it equal for everybody, if they come out there and give everybody the shot at it, is the best that I can do.
Do you want to relate to that report that we had?
Well, that report, we have a copy of that report, and that's...
Extremely...
That is, they want it fixed up better than it was before flood. Basically, I mean, you're, you're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars to fix up one space for the post office.
Was that from...
That was the...
S M I or something. Well, they were like, like, lead paint, they want the, lead paint removed, well, it's been there forever.
You know, just stuff like that, you know.
There's a crack underneath one of the windows. Well, the building's probably a hundred years old, there's probably a dozen cracks in it. I mean, it's, as far as, you know, paying for that, that's pretty unrealistic, as far as, you know, the way they want it done. It's, it's, you know, and it all has to be done by certified people.
Contractors.
I mean, it's, it's a chunk of change to fix it out. For the little bit of rent, they were paying a buck. And it would take you ten years to recover the cost of that. So, I mean, we're not opposed to it, but...
And they just, when it happened, they just, I, you know, we was making contact back and forth.
Sure.
And they just told us, well, we got a guy, and he went to, we had two or three more that flooded, and he went and used one of those, and he came by here and landed, and because I had opened up money then, and...
Right, well, the one thing, I mean, there's pictures in here.
I don't even know what's on, I never even saw them before.
There's, there's pictures in here, and whoever was in charge of it didn't even bother to move anything off the floor before the water come.
Or off the bottom shelves.
And then, now they're expecting us to date it.
They knew the water was coming up.
Yeah, he went in and took out...
There's stuff on shelves, didn't even bother to move.
Right, and some of that stuff was in the lobby, but we took up, we took out all the stamp stuff, all the mail, everything like that, there was some of that stuff.
I mean, before the water came up.
That was before. We went in and took out computers and all that stuff. And there's a desk in there, and it's, the thing was, we was trying to figure out what to do with St. Genvee, because we was debating on where to move that operation too. But that's what they, you know...
But what I'm getting at is, you know, making us to pay, because nobody moves stuff up to higher shelves, that's kind of unrealistic too.
I don't know.
So can we, I guess, to sum it up, can we come to the next meeting?
Sure.
Sure, you're more than welcome.
And you guys talk about some ideas, and I don't think it's going to happen real soon.
Right. And that'll give us time to talk to people here in town to see.
Right.
And the word, maybe we can get the word out, and we can get people to come to the meeting and give you their suggestions.
Do that.
So, yeah, I think that would be great, you guys coming to the next meeting.
Is that okay with you guys there?
Oh yeah, sure.
The last thing we want to do is tear it down. That's the last thing we want to do. It's too good of a building to just tear it down.
It could be, it could be really nuts.
It could be fixed up pretty nice.
Right on the highway.
Is stairs to even be used for wedding receptions, or...
The hall is great on top, but it's...
Beautiful.
I'll, I'll tell my wife that I, while I retired from the hospital, one of the guys I worked with, he said the other day, he said, we had our wedding reception there, and our fiftieth is coming up, so can we have it there again?
Yeah, there you go.
I said, well, maybe, you know, maybe, you know.
Okay, yeah, let's, we'll, you know, get the word out and maybe, you know, find out what the people in town would like.
Right, and what you need.
Right.
Now, what do you, what do you need? You know what you need more than we do.
Okay, is that all you guys?
Uh, yeah, what you guys... No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have bill number nine twenty-five. So I need a motion to read bill number nine twenty-five.
Alderman Flaggastue, Alderman Dennis Bovay, Alderman Gloria Baker, Alderman Paul Franklin. Bill number nine twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing and empowering the city collective to self-permit for fire protection to residents outside the city limits, but within a six mile radius of the fire station, enabling the fire departments to go out of the city limits to the extent of the aforementioned six mile radius, and establish fees for the issuance of fire tags and services rendered.
So do I have a motion for second reading of bill number nine twenty-five?
I second it. Lower hall vote, Alderman Flaggastue, Alderman Dennis Bovay, Alderman Gloria Baker, Alderman Paul Franklin. Bill number nine twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing and empowering the city collective to self-permit for fire protection to residents outside the city limits, but within a six mile radius of the fire station, enabling the fire departments to go out of the city limits to the extent of the aforementioned six mile radius, and establish fees for the issuance of fire tags and services rendered.
Okay, so do I have a motion to pass bill number nine twenty-five?
I second it. Alderman Flaggastue, Alderman Dennis Bovay, Alderman Gloria Baker, Alderman Paul Franklin. Bill number nine twenty-five is passed.
Okay, resolution to raise the capital, capitalization threshold, I think it's all.
A motion to approve a resolution to raise the capitalization threshold as required by the auditor and treasurer.
Really? You seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, do I? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, equipment pro. This is concerning the lift station.
At Marion, uh, Marion Flit.
At Marion Flit.
Right.
Dennis got a, a estimate of what it would cost to fix it, and you also in your packet have, what, Van de Beer, Van de Beer?
Van de Vander.
Van de Vander, I can't talk today.
It's okay.
What they charged us to do the antique mall, so you got, you know, and Vander, Vander hasn't gotten back to you with another...
No, I talked to him just the other day, and he's still not back at work. However, Frankie did bring up a good point today, that we've been talking to just one person in the company. We haven't actually contacted the company, you know, to talk with anybody else or to get them to get a bid. However, seeing as that what it costs to do the antique mall, and, and what they are going to charge us, and being local, I'd rather give it to a local business and save two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's cheaper.
I agree. So I, I mean, I apologize, I apologize to Joe for not waiting, but I can't wait no longer. I mean, it's been over three months.
You shouldn't have to follow that, if they want business, they take it.
Yeah. They shouldn't be, you know, messing around. So if you guys want to go ahead and approve this estimate for equipment pro.
I make a motion.
You sure can.
I make a motion to accept the bid for equipment pro.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item is, down at the syrup plant, we have a van and an ambulance that needs to be, something needs to be done with it.
Can I add something to that?
Yes, you can.
I'll tell them, we have a street sweeper down, have a boat, my, I would consider they've never did work. They have never worked. It's for air force, we don't, don't get, it's junk, get rid of, get rid of all that junk down there. I don't care if it's fifty dollars a ton, get rid of it.
Well, that, that's the question, what, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to try and sell it? Do you want to take it to the junk?
Well, my deal is, and I talked to Frankie and Mike about this today, is that by the time you get a trailer, okay, whether you, you borrow one from somebody or whatever, and the gas it takes to take it up there to the back, what you got for the junk, you might as well, you, you got no profit there, it's only forty dollars a ton right now.
Fifty something.
Okay, so what's your suggestion then?
Well, I know a couple of people that are interested in the truck, okay?
What truck? We have a van.
The, the van truck, the one that was donated.
The old van.
Oh, okay. You said truck, I didn't know. We want a truck on here.
It's a truck, it's a box truck, is what it is.
So somebody's interested in buying it, is what you're saying?
Interested in giving the city whatever they want for it, not within a reasonable price. I mean, we had it out for bids before, so I don't know what, you know...
Oh, I know, this stuff is such an awful error.
And we need to get it.
I don't care if you get a dime for it. One thing D and R taught me, now you should have learned to, they don't want that plant looking neat.
Yep.
And if they don't look neat, they're going to walk in, they're going to nip pick that thing to pieces.
Yep.
And I know the big hotels, the city, and they'll tell you that.
Oh yeah.
Now let's get it cleaned up. I don't care, it's junk, you can get rid of it however.
Gloria, one of you?
That sounds fine to me. Yeah, you know?
Get rid of it.
You know, you can give some money out if they're hurting.
Okay.
We don't. If we don't, you're not gonna sell it another year to find out.
Okay.
Try again.
Okay, so if we can sell the van, we'll sell it, haul the ambulance off, whatever.
I'd like to switch, street sweeper to the next one, you're the one.
Okay. You need it.
Well, there is a person interested in the old ambulance, right? He wants me to call him and see if he'll, after we've decided, before we just ask him, I want to give his order.
Yeah, I will.
Well...
They take what it resets.
Exactly, that's what I would do.
Okay.
What, what do you guys think? Just whatever he wants to give us?
Get rid of it.
If he can get, if he can make a buck, fine, if you can't, get rid of it.
My question is, does it deal with him?
Yes, it does.
It doesn't?
Well, they probably have one now because the old...
That's what I get.
The van, does it run?
Does. I mean, you got, you got the ambulance van down there and you got our city van.
Right.
The old city van, we're talking about that.
Does it run? Excuse me?
No. It ran before. Before, but like I said... I mean, it, it's, I think someone went out with the transmission, I thought, I think they did.
Okay, so just tell them, maybe it might run, maybe it won't, we don't know.
It's anxious.
Yeah, whatever you want to give us, we'll take it.
Put it on a hill, hold on.
And as far as the ambulance goes, if we can't get rid of it?
That's what he's wanting, the ambulance, he don't want the van, he want the ambulance, the old Ford truck.
Oh, okay.
That's what says...
Whichever one he wants, the other one, I guess, all off the junk, whenever.
Along with us, with the, uh...
Street sweeper.
Yeah. Not sure you put that in there too, okay?
That thing been holding us for, for fifteen years.
I'm even finding that.
Yeah.
And it's...
That didn't work.
Never did, it's a three.
Yeah.
Did it sweep any streets?
I'll tell you what, I got some here, maybe across the room here, and those tenders and stuff, you know, the dirt and the rad. Had it to be trayed underneath of, it was filling up right away.
Yeah.
Then the wheels were locked up. It was useless.
So, it wasn't so...
For there's nothing like that, but...
Okay. Okay, the next thing on the list is employee grades.
What they want? I don't know, there's something I'd like to know before I even do this. Give some information, and I'd like to table this until next month. If I ask him, give me some information, I want to take that.
And I kind of think we need to do that in closed session.
I kind of agree with you.
Close is higher priority, disappointing, you have no...
You're, you're walking around behind where they are.
Okay, well, we can have an open session, of course.
But I'll, I'll...
They want more information, so if you want to table it, go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion to table this for the next meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I have my own, I'm not in doubt.
Good woman.
Cable.
Okay.
You know what I told you, I want to see the things of it. I like to, last time anybody had rates.
Oh, yeah.
I want to see what salaries are.
Okay.
And if they did get a rate, well, not a win, how much could they get? But it's been something, we've drug our feet on this for years. People everywhere in the world getting a little bit of rate anyway. These boys don't get much rate.
Yeah, and honestly, I think both of them deserve a raise. But we will discuss that at the next meeting. Okay. Okay, we're down to the law ordinance enforcement. So, my question is, do you guys want to try to find another police officer?
Yeah, the, uh, don't you run that in the paper or something like that?
You could.
No, you could, I'm not, he could.
But, um, someone has contacted David that is a police officer and is interested.
Okay.
Um, if you want to go that way, I will have David call him. We will set up a meeting because you guys need to interview him.
Right.
And, um, if that's the way you guys want to go with this, which I know, uh, having a police officer is gonna be better than just having somebody enforce the ordinances. So, are you guys all in for David contacting this guy and...
I am, sure.
I am.
We're, we're a good fit.
We sure are.
Okay.
And if anybody else wants to, that anybody knows, they can sign up and be interviewed.
But see, I didn't know if you guys would want to try to put an add to the paper and contact this guy or just contact this guy and wait and see what happens and then put an add to the paper, I mean...
Well, if you put an add to the paper, you're gonna have to put a lot in specification.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have every Tom, they can carry, coming in that don't know what the heck they're talking about.
Right.
We like, we need someone that's already certified.
Correct.
He doesn't need to go off.
This guy is.
I'm interested in him.
So you just want to call him and set up an interview and then go from there?
It sounds good.
I like, well, just make sure we can all be...
Right, no, it would, it would be...
On a regular second meeting, Dave would be the best, I, I, my opinion, sorry, but you just, the, two weeks from today.
Right, you know, like, if we had another meeting, we would have it, then we could have it, this interview at this time. Yeah, I can't talk tonight.
Mom, me, I guess, talk with your hands.
So, if David can call him and see if he can be here, like at six o'clock or six thirty.
Regular time, make it close.
Well, you know, the only thing I'm thinking about is, uh, it's a shame we can't get the word spread around that we are interested in, you know, uh...
Well, it could be put in the paper and he said, the...
And just see, yeah, just see, we're in, city's interested in a, you know, a police officer and, uh...
You had to have, oh, do, do...
Yeah, well, yeah, they gotta, they gotta have the paperwork be accomplished, right, you know?
So do you want an ad put in the paper also? I mean, we could just say that we're looking for a police officer and they could call.
That's what I would do.
And then David could tell them, this is what, what you have to have?
Yeah, and plus, we could still, you know, talk to this guy too, I mean, uh, I throw some feelers out or, you know, put it in the paper or whatever and, uh...
To run it down also.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would do.
And just put, you know, some...
That's a good idea.
Anniversary.
I mean, not go into...
We're gonna have weed milk.
Okay. Okay, so everybody's good on that then, right?
Yeah, I don't think you should lose all your baskets, anyone, you want eggs in one basket, you know?
We're not going to, you know, we're gonna have a couple of baskets.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know exactly what I'm saying.
But, well, David will call this guy and, uh, see if he can set up an interview. You guys can all interview him and then he'll also go ahead and put an ad in the paper so that people know, you know, that we're looking for somebody. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, like, we interview this guy, who puts this in the paper, we can't just say, okay, we want him down. We're gonna have to give a time, a little time, see if anybody replies.
Right, all right.
That would have looked way, way...
Right. Yeah, you're absolutely right, I mean, we could interview him and then, you know, go from there.
Well, it'd be so long, we're not gonna, you shouldn't.
Right.
Would have to do it.
Okay. Moving on. Um, departmental reports, David.
Yes, uh, last week I completed the ICS EOC interface class, uh, you guys love, love me though too. It was an excellent class, I learned a lot of stuff. Um, interestingly, I found this awesome, um, I've got a two-page checklist of all the things you need to do. It's the readiness assessment checklist. Number one item on your readiness assessment checklist has the jurisdiction adopted the NIMS and ICS through executive order proclamation or legislation has the jurisdiction's official incident response system, which we did last month, so I want to thank you for passing order. It's nine twenty-four because now we are in good eyes of the federal government. So appreciate that. Also, there's a class coming up, um, April twenty-second, or I'm sorry, twenty-eighth, it's a Monday class. Um, it is rapid needs assessment, um, it's effective damage assessment program, conduct rapidly effective damage assessments to save lives, protect property, environmental, um, and the process of recovery and mitigation. Uh, I'd like permission to take that if I can get that from the board.
Where is that class at?
Uh, this one is in, um, well, St. Louis Emergency Management Center, but I think that's in Warton. Good for what?
I'm gonna read one. I think it's a need class.
Okay, so are you guys in agreement to let David go to this class?
Can I go?
If you want.
Or is that Warton, Warton? Yeah, I didn't lose that one.
No, I have...
Okay, you got your approval.
All right, um, I went to a meeting in Seyston with FEMA, that's the, um, uh, applicant briefing meeting. Um, I was given a heads up by the health department to have my gun's number ready, so I was able to turn in the paperwork on site. So I was the first one to get my paperwork in. I also, um, have filled out the, the next, you know, private worksheet, um, submitted that to them. So the next thing is gonna be a kickoff meeting, which they will come here to do that. Today I actually discovered that there's actually a class on, um, the public assistance program, which is what this program is. And I was like blown away, I was like, oh, I need this class, I took this class, I passed it today, so, um, helpful information on the process to get your money and it's gonna help me a lot, you know, do all the paperwork and stuff, so that was great. I also, um, would like to thank the health department, they gave us some two-way radios. I got four Midlands, two Kenwoods and one Motorola, had my couple chargers and batteries, but they all work, um, so I just want to thank them for that and that's all I got.
Yeah, that's awesome, we'll meet them next, next year.
Definitely.
Okay, water and sewer report, Dennis.
Okay. Uh, chlorine residuals are good, the dacties are good, so, um, DNR sent, uh, the mayor and myself a copy of the inspection. We had a couple of minor discrepancies noted and, uh, they've been already taken care of, so we should be in good shape. They had a heck of a lot of recommendations, but no, nothing, there was only two minor things that we had, and they've been taken care of. As everybody knows, Frankie got a seawater license, uh, uh, I'm real happy about that on his wastewater. And Mike has a PS two. So I wanted to let the board know that I'm stepping down as operator of the distribution system and Mike Rosensway will take over the distribution system. And I'm stepping down as a water treatment operator for the sewer plant and turning it over to Frank Alman, who has a seawater wastewater license. The, uh, thing I have to ask the board though is if they'll approve me as to be in a backup operator, which the city needs. And, uh, I need their approval just so I can be covered during the time that I have to cover for anybody. And they won't have to pay me, it'll be a volunteer on my part. But I need the board's approval because I have to be bonded during that time when I do the city work, so...
We got a problem with that.
Paul?
I'm good, Willie.
Gloria?
I don't know, um, okay, there you go, you got your approval.
Okay. We fixed a couple of grinders, one was Frank Girard's up here discharge line, and we've had a lot of problems with that, but things have been taken care of on that. The, uh, it was, uh, Ray Schwentz on, uh, Cemetery Road and the Evans, Bill Evans trailer, one forty-five Cemetery Road, where Ronnie, uh, was, took care of that one. And, uh, the church up here, the hall, where you guys are gonna have your thing, they, uh, we're gonna have to change the float in that, by the way, so, uh, it's been, it was loaded today. Frankie took care of, went up there and pumped it down today, so it's all pumped down, but we just have to change the float in that so it'll work properly. And, uh, as far as the, on the water side, uh, they had to shut a couple of waters off and stuff, just a couple of service calls and checked to see if there was a leak in one of the, uh, meter pits because one of the citizens was concerned about water being in the pit. And they checked it out and discovered that it was no, no swirling water, no bubbling up water or anything, so it must be seep water coming in into that pit. And, uh...
Did you guys contact him and tell him that?
I don't know if they did, I wasn't there when they inspected, but Frankie and Mike checked it out, so I don't know.
Okay.
All right, that's basically all I have, uh, I mean, you got any questions about DNR inspection report, come and see me and I'll be happy to go over it with you.
Okay. Frankie, when you guys went up there and checked that, did you guys contact him to let him know?
I don't know if Mike contacted him or not, I mean, I know we checked it out, we didn't see no disturbance of water. I think it was just, we was up there messing around with, um, hydrant, flushing the hydrant out one day and it might have run off of that or just rainwater. I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't like, we have run water in here where it's been paid up quite a lot.
Well, I would appreciate if you would find out and if, if he hasn't been contacted, to contact him and let him know. Okay, fine, okay, thank you. Park, park and cemetery.
Oh, well, those high winds last month, there was a job on the trees up at the cemetery, meant, uh, Frankie and, uh, uh, Mike, they had to saw in there, they're cleaning up, they got stuff in the piles, but it's so damn wet that it's hard to get in there without really tearing stuff up. But, uh, that wind did a real job on them trees. And, uh, the park, somebody decided to do some donuts down there. Now, they didn't tear it up, tear the grass up bad, but, uh, you can see where they did their little swirl and then they come on back out, so... It's a shame, you know, I was, I was down there looking at that and I thought about all the work those little girls did last summer and you got some clown pulling something like that, so... But, uh, that's it, I mean, you know, the, uh, the guys are on top of cemetery, getting, getting rid of that brush. They got her all pop, you know, popping different spots and they'll get rid of that. The damage down the park is not that bad, they didn't really stand on her, well, it wasn't a heavy vehicle, I'll put it to you that way. But you can see they slopped her up a little bit, so...
Street department?
They never have a lot, they never have a lot of prep on the last three weeks, uh, my company, my contractor and the, for the process of getting a testament on the, uh, deal term. And I don't, uh, we did have a citizen, no, a friend, I talked, he came down and talked to me. He wants to gravel on his road. And I have a problem with that, because it does need it, about every three years we'll put gravel on there, get straightened out for it. I told Frankie, I don't know if it, which way we're better off to go, just get Fisher all in?
Fisher all in and then I'll take the tractor. I'll take the tractor, we'll do that. It'll take a while here, I'm not here.
Okay.
We'll put about two inches of rock on there, it's good road, it, it goes down after a while, get a little warm.
And we're wanting to short from, uh, Sixth Street and go back to the car.
Last time we did the other way, we got a pile of rock back there. That's all I got.
Okay. Fire department? Frank, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Oh, okay.
I got, I got six callouts, I had two mutual calls, uh, two mutual aid calls, one for Ozor, one for Perryville. Um, had an MVA accident, uh, we went to and brushed fire, we went to. Uh, barbecue, we, uh, set our date for a barbecue, it'll be, uh, April seventeenth. So, you can join us for some good pork steaks and brats. The other thing that I want to talk to the board about, uh, I had a little bit of a missed house on...
Um, the other thing that I want to talk to the board about, uh, I had a little bit of a missed house on a callout. My guys didn't grab the right truck and I kind of felt bad about it. Um, and we had a motor vehicle accident. Uh, they called for a new truck, which it's got our rescue tour, one of our job lot. But we don't, we can't, we can't take our equipment from our equipment van and stick over in that truck because, one, not everybody is able to drive air brakes.